We'll start with the reading and approve all the minutes. Did everybody get a copy of the previous minutes? Would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the board's minutes.
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Can you approve the July special minutes? That's a special session. Who can do that?
I think, yeah, I think we should really go ahead and approve that July special minutes also. So we had a special meeting in July and we have minutes for those. And I think those were sent out also. So if you're okay, can I have a motion to approve those minutes also?
I approve to approve the special meeting.
I'll second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we had the approve of the bills. And I saw those that came in. There's some okay.
Did you see them?
Not all of these.
Okay.
You've been looking through them.
Yeah, okay, we saw the information that was sent. So can I have a motion to approve the bills?
I will.
In a second. All those in favor? All right. All right, and I'll go to the reporter, the director, Ian.
Well, it's been a fun month. My first day was June 30th this month. And so the staff are actually counting along with me on days because we've had some unique things happen each day. But I've had a certainly a crash course in audits and budgeting. And we've attended Kate and Sarah and I attended a budget workshop down with the Indiana Library Federation, which was very helpful. They had representatives from the DLGF there, so they helped us. We actually also have a meeting scheduled with our representative in August. So they are going to be working with us through that budget process. Actually, I'll be talking a little bit more about the budget later.
Okay.
We also had our elevator permit expired. And thankfully, a patron pointed it out as he was getting off the elevator that hey, their elevator permit has expired. So I've dealt with the elevator and the company that does elevators, the Department of Homeland Security of Indiana. So another crash course. So but it has been a fun week, fun month. Everyone here has been so welcoming. The staff have been great. I've had a chance to meet with all the staff now one-on-one.
Okay.
Just as I'm working through getting to know them and also wage analysis that is hopefully coming in the next week or two. So just to look at those salaries, what people are making. So, yeah. Trying to think of anything else. I actually met with Paula Newcomer. She is the Indiana State Library Northern Region Representative. So I had a chance to meet with her. She's also given me some information and given me some places to go to investigate for a website because in the next year or two, we will need to be getting our website updated to make sure it is accessible. It's a new law that was put in place in 2024. That's pretty much all I have.
Fine, that sounds good.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry, I do have more. Pardon me. So part of what I would like to start doing is letting some of my staff get up and present to you all. So we are actually going to do a summer reading recap. And so who wants to go first, doesn't it you?
Yes.
Or anyone wanted to go first?
Go up to the podium kind of thing. Yeah.
Yeah.
So summer reading overall for my department was a huge success despite all the things that have gone on building-wise, personnel-wise and everything. We see an increase, which you can look on my board report. From 2022, we had 105 teenagers, which is grade incoming, grade six through 12 registered. In 2023, we dropped to 99. In 2024, we dropped to 80. And then this year, we had 122. So that's fantastic. And for any of this, if you ever need more information, please feel free to reach out to me or read through my full report. As far as our summer reading programs go, I break it up into June and July to show the drops in it. Now, the first one you're going to see is the attendance for 2022 to 2025. There's going to be a drastic drop between 2022 and 2023 because IMLS changed the standards for what our programming was and they dropped passive programming. So that really killed us on that. But this year for summer reading program, we did offer 34 programs for young adults and we had 166 in attendance. If you look at the next page of the summer reading program attendance, that is for the years 2023 and 2025, that'll give you a more realistic look as what it was over the years. We see a trend that it is dropping a lot in July. So we've all been kind of working on how to maybe better that. Maybe we need to back off. Maybe summer reading is too long. So that's just some discussions to have in the future. This year for the young adult department, we kind of combined how we did it before where for every book you read, you get a ticket and you put it into a basket. But we do have a lot of kids who come up to the children's department and go by minutes and get level prizes. So we combined that this year. And I think that was a huge success. So the, on page four of this little spread that I have, it shows how many kids completed one book, five books, 10 books, 15, and who all completed those books. We had 55 teens at least read one, 34 teens read at least five, 23 at 10, 15 at 15, and 12 completed total. So for our first time doing that, I'm very impressed with those numbers. On page five of my lovely little sheets here, I'm tracking the grade participations. Now, this is the students going into these grades. So these are younger sixth graders. They haven't had their first day. Unfortunately, we discovered that we lost the data for 2022. So that's why we only have 2023, 24, and 25 available. But if you look at that, grade six through 12, it remains pretty balanced and the numbers are on that sheet as well. So I'm personally very, very pleased with how summer reading turned out. It's not just me, it's my teen advisory board. They put in a lot, a lot, a lot of work to make sure that this was said. I had a lot of help from my other department heads and staff members. So I am overall very impressed with how it went this year. And now we are planning for Teen Tober, Summer Reading 2.0. So does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So Kate.
Just want to give us a little wrap-up of the children's. Yes, so summer reading, once again, successful. We get a lot of compliments. This was the first year where we put all of the ages into one flyer instead of having four different age groups. We got a lot of positive compliments about that, which was exciting. So we had 135 school-age kids and 95 babies, toddlers, and preschoolers who participated. So overall, we had a good turnout. We did see the usual July, like after the Fourth of July, the attendance just kind of drops. Overall, if you look at our statistics, participation was down because we only did seven weeks instead of eight weeks. Again, when there's no main building after the Fourth of July, if that makes sense. So we did, we don't do as much outreach. I did go to the Marshall County Fair for the third year for the Storytime at the Fair. And then Anna came up with me to a parking lot party on Wednesday. So that should be a fun time. We did have an increase and we have like one less like school-age kid where I'm like, let's do one more. An interesting thing that I saw, because I track what checks out a lot too, had we had a decrease in picture book checkouts this year, but we had a bigger increase in nonfiction checkouts, which I think goes to show that like all of the hard work that I, you know, we've put into leading our nonfiction, getting more updated materials, everything is paying off because we're seeing an increase in the nonfiction checkouts.
Right.
Thanks, Kate. And then Sonia.
Following similar to YA and the children's department, summer reading was a big success in the adult department, which I think reflects greatly on the quality of our staff and the people that pitched in to help us because of everything that happened. We, there was a very short turnaround for us to get an adult summer reading program put together in a few short weeks. So pretty much across the board, with the exception of two areas, we saw an increase. So we saw about a 6% increase in signups. So this year, we had 149 signups versus 141. So, you know, it's only about eight, but we'll take it. We did have an increase in program offerings. And now that includes individual one-offs that we have in like the BYOB craft on top of our regular scheduled program that we did every month. We kind of include that in summer reading. So this year, we only had 47 programs compared to 51 programs last year. So that's about an 8% decrease in program offerings. But interestingly enough, we saw a 93% increase in attendance. So that tells me that maybe if the less offerings we have, patrons are less, you know, sometimes less is better for patrons. So I thought that was pretty interesting. We did see about a 15% decrease in circulation from last year. Last year, we had, from the start of summer reading until the end, we had about 2,091 checkouts versus this year was with 1,781. So about a 310 difference. But one thing to keep in mind is that the summer reading this year was about two weeks shorter than last year. So we could definitely have made up that difference in just those two weeks alone. But overall, we got great feedback from patrons. They love the decorations, they love the programming offerings we had. So nothing but good things all around from the patrons in the adult department and lots of help and support from the children's and YA with the adult department while we kind of navigate future.
We had great prices and stuff.
Yeah, yes, patrons really did enjoy the prizes this year too. So, all right, okay, we did have 827 slip entries, which works out to be about 5.5 books read per patron. And please think Matt, on the way out, he had to count all those slips by hand.
And YA.
And YA.
91 books in YA.
Yeah, and I think we, there was, it didn't seem like they tracked how many entry slips we had last year. So that's why it's not in my board report or I just didn't find it. But yeah, 827 slips across nine jar or eight jars.
You had eight and I had six.
So, yeah. So pretty good turnout.
Yes. While Sonia is still standing up here, I'll just briefly jump ahead and just say Sonia is now the head of adult services. We were taking off some interim and she's accepted that position. So. All right. And so as you were all probably like trying to add up numbers for the summer reading, as I gathered the reports today, we actually, when you add them all up, had 401 participants in the summer reading. So I think that's marvelous.
When it sounds like you guys are all on top of it and you're trying to say maybe July is going to look different next year because it just hasn't started looking different. And that's okay. Thank you. Are we ready for old business? And the first thing in old business is building issues updates.
No issues at all. So let's start with exterior. Was able to get in and remedy storm sewer issues that were outside with tiles being broken, some dead-end tiles that were just stubbed in into underground that had no caps on them, but they were tied into the sewer. So that was creating a vacuum in some of those areas that was creating some sink holes, some other areas where tile was crushed, broken and covered with concrete. So we, we we believe we've gotten to the bottom of all those and every one of those issues and deal with that, about that, have things restored as far as lawn and landscaping wise now. So now it's, we've got a couple more pieces of concrete to pour back in. One of them is colored concrete, so I go back to the architect and find what that color was. But that's on the schedule to be getting done here next, next week or so. Let's see, all the bay window issues and everything like that are taken care of now. So that's sealed up really nicely and looks, looks a ton better. And that tree is trimmed back, so it doesn't, doesn't cause as much issues there. Moving indoors, so the children's department plumbing, we have the floor torn up in there and just got done meeting this afternoon with the plumbers on that. We basically what has caused some, some elements of what caused the issue, why, why the plumbing has been such an issue down there is basically we have kind of two fixed points on either end of the new plumbing that they were, they were tying it to. And with plumbing needing a certain amount of slope between, between points. And so with those being fixed, that limited the amount of slope they could get. So we've, we've now, what we got done meeting with today was rerouting the, the high end, what I would call it, fixed points, rerouting the plumbing in that area to tie into a different spot. So then that would give us the ability to adjust that plumbing to a better slope. So we do that. What that will cause now, the mop sink that's down in the maintenance room ties into that new, that pipe that we've got to re-slope. So then that line's going to be out of elevation now too. It was already low, actually, that pipe where it ties into the line coming from the bathrooms and goes to the mop sink is already tilted back. It's, it's still at the opposite. And so it was going to have to be dealt with, I think, regardless. Something I was debating on just because of it's, it's a different type of waste that we're dealing with in a mop sink versus restrooms.
Right.
But I think now that we have it torn up, it's like we've got to, we've got to deal with it. But it will, it will entail going into the, into the maintenance room and tearing up some more floor in there to redo the area around the mop sink and then over catching the bat, for the sink on the backside of the children's, like our room back there, the craft room. So all of that plumbing ties together. So we do need to rerun that, that plumbing section in the maintenance, storage maintenance room as well. So we're, we're, we're checking the things off and narrowing down, I believe, our, after our meeting today, we do have a good solution. It's just gonna, it's just gonna be a little bit more demolition for, for moving forward, but that's okay. That's what it takes.
Yeah, and we had talked about that, once you got in that you're going to find. And so it looks like you might have finally found it is the
It's a slope. That is just a challenging slope because the, because the main, I'll call the main existing line that runs from down here at the end of the children's department that runs down through then that hallway, that whole line was existing. And so where it ties in at the far end of that line was the highest point of that main line that would exist and going out. And so that being a fixed point where they had to tie in, it just makes it really challenging to get the, you know, the slope that you need to continue up, you know, continue going up higher to add on these bathrooms that are over here. But again, I believe we've, we've come up with a solution that will remedy it, just takes a little more demo yet. So be prepared. More is coming.
Did you tear your wall out, like, at the books?
Uh, no. I'll be getting a better wall. No.
With all the rain we've had, you haven't had any problems with the
Yes.
You have, okay.
Yeah, Thursday night's rain caused the floor to be wet. We put a fan on it, it dried. Then it rained some more on Friday. Yeah, Thursday nights are Friday. So they put the fan on, left it on overnight. When we came in Saturday, the floor was dry. We took the fan out, it rained some more, the floor was starting to wet.
Yeah.
We put the fan back on. But it's been months.
About two minutes, didn't it?
Yeah. That I'm, yeah, okay, good to know. I'll take that one. It's not a plumbing issue.
Yeah, I would think.
Well, this other tile is starting to get discolored too.
Yeah.
But the wall's not wet.
All right, thank you.
So it's messy.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to the selective insurance update.
Well, as Kate let you all know, last month, background checks had not been performed on the staff. So I have reached out to Presidium and we have gotten background checks on almost all staff except for one of our suburb helpers. So that's coming along. We also, part of what Steve, the insurance agent, said was we needed to update a couple policies. So I've been working on updating, first of all, the background check policy. So if you want to take a look at that, that is including, I've made the statements of including that EPL employees are going to be screened every three years and also included some information about volunteers will also need to be screened if they are 18 years and older. So that's one of the policies that does need updating so that we can continue background checks on our existing employees. And then going forward, any new hires will have this background check performed prior to being offered a position.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be something that will happen at the interview phase. And we will, if it's a, if it's a candidate we like, we will have them, or you know, we're going to have them sign this document so that we already have it signed. And then upon offering them the job, we will need to have that background check before we can confirm.
Any questions on that part? Do you, do you need us to approve this tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of that thing?
I do have extra copies.
Does everybody feel comfortable?
Yeah, it was, yeah, this was already, the areas that are in gray have been the ones that were changed, changed, yes. Everything else was already existing. It just wasn't being practiced.
Do we pay for the background check?
Yes, we do. It's about $16 or $17. And it's a criminal background check plus a county check and then your state and national. Looking for misdemeanors and felonies.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to accept the policy as written, updated, policy as written.
I would second. Take a vote. Or is there any more discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
The other policy that you all have, and I actually have a copy of that one as well, is the child invulnerable adult protection policy. Part of what we received in the letter was by Steve, was that we needed to have some content in about social media and about bullying and harassing in our protection policy. So again, that's everything, this, this policy was actually in existence September 30th of last year. Everything in gray was what I have added to it to add in the bullying, harassing, punishment in social media. So bullying and harassing is under one bullet point. And then the social networking is listed under conducting unauthorized off-the-clock relationships with minor patrons. And it's, this is just a way to keep people protected.
Right.
Feel free if you see any changes that you need or would like to make.
Did you find this? Did you get this from somewhere else or is this just?
I read through some other people's policies.
Just gleaned the rest.
And this, have you had insurance? Look at this.
He has not replied to me. I have sent him both and not her background. I've actually sent it to him twice.
I mean, it's, it's, it's elaborating and going more, you know, there's more information than what it was previously. So I don't think there's an issue there.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think there was something, Kate, wasn't there? If, if we were making progress, they said as long as we made progress within 30 days, like by showing that we were doing background checks, that they wouldn't cancel the insurance policy. So if you want to table it next time and have more time to review.
No, I'd, I'd like you to approve it.
I'll second, okay. All those in favor? All right, it looks like we're ready for the 2026 budget update.
Like I said earlier in my director's report, we are meeting with the DLGF representative in August. Sarah, Kate and I gleaned a whole lot of information from that meeting, which I know the last time it was talked about, we would contact Baker and Tilly. They actually never responded. But also Sarah and I talked about it and we really feel that a lot of this budget, we can handle ourselves. And by using the DLGF representative, they actually go through, they know this stuff inside and out. They go through our numbers after we've put in numbers and they will actually look at our numbers and say, this isn't right, this isn't right. So
That's okay.
Yes. Oh, yeah, because then we can modify those numbers. So Sarah and I feel comfortable going ahead with the budget as is. So I just wanted to let you all know then, we're going to be meeting, we're, Sarah and I will be working closely. Some of the information from that meeting was, or that webinar was recorded. So it was like six hours. So we can go back and re-watch too. And we can re-watch the one that you all attended earlier too. So instance, Janice is the treasurer as well. If we need to pull her in, we'll be doing that. So we really think we don't need Baker and Tilly. So we will be set to provide you all with numbers, the budget by our office meeting, which then stays on this, on the right timetable because September, it'll be the notice to the taxpayers. And October will be approval and submission to the state. So that's where we're at.
So we have to fill out October.
Yes, yes. Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, it looks like, is, is there any other old business? All right, then we'll move on to new business. All right, organizational tracks.
I just updated, there's another extra one if they want to see them that way. Still a part of, that actually does have Sonia's, Sonia is our new head of adult services. So we're realigning things. I would like to eventually change titles, but we're kind of locked into our salary ordinance from November. So titles will probably be changing at the end of the year. But as I've said earlier, I am working on the wage analysis and I hope to have that completed this next week or two so that we can get employees, staff paid what they need to be paid. We've also, I created new job descriptions for the head of adult services. So Sonia had her new job description, so that is complete. And then I've created a job description for an adult services assistant or two because we've had the staff of three, Matt, Sandy Cross, and who am I missing? Jennifer have helped us this summer, which has been a mess. So, but we will need to be replacing them. So that for sure. That position is already created and we're ready to pull that out. So just to let you all know that I'm still working on job descriptions and I've got two done and I'll continue as time allows.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. Being on top of things. Yeah, and I've got to think, getting how much you're going to pay them is important during your budget, to know where you're at.
Right, exactly.
Right. That leads into the transition team stipend. Said we would talk about this. So is that for us to
Yes. Yes. Because really, I wasn't here when this whole, everything began, so. This would be their final stipend because Sonia is already now the head. And I, we said we would pay them through the end of the month, the extra bonus in the salaries, so.
Okay, and we're talking about, so I'll make sure I have the right, Sonia, Ryanan, and Kate. And then we gave Sonia and Kate had an increase, what was it for that whole time? I can't remember. Was it?
Yeah, during the interim.
Was it for the whole second half of that? Was it for the whole second half of that?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't remember.
So those pay increases ended last Saturday.
Ended last Saturday?
Yes, at the end of the payroll.
Okay.
So they'll go back to the normal.
But Sonia wouldn't because?
Yes, she just bumped up, she will have a.
That will just continue?
Yes.
But we never, so we increased, but we never did like a stipend for that time and all that energy and all that.
Right.
March till. From March till when? Well, it would be. Well, you guys, we did one, we did one and that went through, I want to say April something, correct?
Yeah, because it was.
When Shelley was still here.
Yeah, so. Oh, okay, so then, okay. And then instead of, you know, talking about that, we just said for now, since Sonia was taking over that position and Kate was taking over the other position, we bumped theirs up. Then, but we did give stipends to staff as well.
Yeah.
So in that transition period, that would be through June thirtieth, what day? Right, so like two and a half months that we. We were, I'm saying, I'm saying we had two and a half months without a director where everybody, you know, you're stepping up and helping out, helping out in areas, so. That's right, I think that's what we're saying. That's the discussion we're having about stipend is from April fourteenth to your hire date. We had staff that stepped up and. And I don't, Cindy had all the, how much each one that we did before, no, I don't tell you that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, but so the transition team members, each got twelve hundred dollars. We identified three staff who had pitched an extra and they all got six hundred and then the other four staff got three hundred, was what we did. And I know I had Sonia, or Cindy and I had had conversations about not necessarily paying the transition team all the same amount because there was varying amount of.
Not sure.
But like, you guys choose whatever you want to do.
I just want to entertain any. Is it about the same amount of time to do just a duplicate of what we did previous? Yeah, and I think too, the second half was not as rough as the first half as well. I think, I'm thinking that we could pay the same amounts, but because Kate and Sonia, they already, they did do the bulk, but they also got the pay increase, they could still get the same amount of a bonus where Ryan maybe didn't do as much, he still can get the same amount of the bonus because he didn't get the bump in pay, is my thinking. I don't know if that seems, you know. Does that make sense what I said and I communicate that, like, okay. And then Sarah, of course, was on the transition team, but. You know, it would have been different, so, you know, I'm sure she would have fallen in one of these. Probably six hundred for, I would suggest for Sarah. She stepped off of the transition team for the second half, but I'm sure. So that would be my suggestion. Is, so say, is, I would, my suggestion would be to pay Sonia, Ryan and Kate the twelve hundred. I think it was, who was identified as the others?
Previously, it had been Sonia, Carly and Cindy.
So Carly and Cindy and Sarah, the six hundred. And then the rest.
Well, and what about the summer? We didn't have them, the summer help wasn't in that last.
Yeah, I would say Cindy, I think, would did as much as what she had in the first portion. Who did?
Cindy. Like she was just kind of, I would say the same as everybody else with the level of help that.
Okay. So just, would you say Carly and Sarah? And you guys were here at the six hundred level and then everybody else at the three hundred level? I mean, you were interim.
There would be, yeah, there'd be more, there'd be three additional at the three hundred.
But we also paid Shelley.
If you include the summer.
We wouldn't, I don't think that they'd leave the summer. They were hired for summer help, they weren't hired for transition would be. You know, I mean, they were, you know, they were hired for their positions for extra help that we needed, regardless.
Temporary employees.
Yeah, the temporary, they wouldn't, yeah. I mean, I'm open to you guys, you know, you, you guys are the ones that were working here. Say what you want to say, Sonia, what do you think?
I understand that the summertime people were just temporary, but also they could have gone literally anywhere else and made four, five, six, seven dollars more than what we were paying them here. But I know at least every, to me, Jen reached out and asked if there was any way for her to help because I had several people, past employees, they didn't care about what they were getting paid. They cared about keeping us the library of.
Of course, okay.
Employees, so they weren't really in it for the money, but the amount of work, the amount of relief I got as the interim, to be able to tackle some of the other tasks that are completely new to me, they've all really stepped up and I feel like, I mean, Ryan and I have kind of talked about, I was just thinking about, you know, if, you know, past if I am like a hundred dollar gift card or staff wanted to pitch in, to give them such to show that they really did. They really helped us out.
Do you want to create a fourth category at one fifty or do you want to stick with the three? Because that would be half, half, half.
But I'm also sensitive to the budget constraints. But I feel like something, their hard work and dedication and for the amount of pay and the amount of work that they did, something needs to be acknowledged for them to thank them because it really, it was, it was tremendous help. I know sometimes they, they were worried about making mistakes, doesn't matter. They were here in the building.
And they knew relief from a stressful.
I think they gave all the departments.
Yeah, so Sarah, what do you, like, looking at the budget and in what you see, do you think that's the three?
Those are absolutely remaining. Okay. That's not worth, so there's a. Without looking, but you can see your percentage underneath on your probation. Give you a good indication that in general, I think above fifty percent. I mean, this, yeah, means we're training over budgeted with caution, you know.
And so what about the thought of, will permanent staff be offended if they get, if the temporary get the same, like should we make it two fifty instead of three hundred? You know, or do?
I personally feel that, you know, I've gotten the opportunity to work with them, you know, they helped me out in my department and some of that. I think that they should be compensated if we have it. It should just be the three tiers.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Because they, because as Sonia said, they really did step up and a lot of it, you know, they did go above and beyond and what can we do? I mean, inventory alone, it's not our favorite thing to do, but we had several of the part timers and stuff really just step up and crank out almost an entire building in like a day.
Yeah, it normally takes.
Willingness, like nobody's ever said no. They were so willing to do anything that we asked.
Going on Ryan's example to put that in perspective, it normally takes us seasoned, year-long employees all summer to get inventorying done up in the adult department and the YA. Between three people, they got it done in about a month and a half. And they're part-time and they have less than twelve hours, most, I think the most scheduled hours is fifteen hours a week. The next one is like twelve hours and they were able to do inventorying on top of their desk shift, on top of tiny little tasks I gave them. So, yeah, they, I don't think regular staff will be insulted. And if they are, I would be more than willing to sit down and talk like, hey, you know, they've really helped us out, they've not just helped out me, they've helped out Carly, they've helped out Ryan. So, yeah, I think the three tiers, they are more than.
And even beyond, getting tables in here for book sale, we had Matt who assisted with that, just him and I. So I mean, again, that above and beyond.
So what I'm hearing is three tiers, a twelve hundred tier, a six hundred tier and a one fifty tier.
No, three hundred.
Oh, three hundred, three hundred.
Yeah, I'd move to approve three tiers of twelve hundred, six hundred and three hundred.
Okay, my second. Is there any more discussion? Do we know how many that is that we have a, so we're sure? So it would be Kate, Sonia and Ryan. So the eight of twelve hundred. Twelve hundred, Carly, Sarah, the six hundred. And then remaining staff at three hundred and any staff at three hundred. All right, then.
Motion, second.
Okay, so we'll vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, best, nice job. Thank them, we really appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Yes, yes.
We made it! Praise for the one. Now we start keeping. Dragging all of us around the ring.
All right, now we're gonna talk about a plumbing discussion. And what we're looking at is, were these issues something that should have been under the builder before? And do we look at compensation from the previous builders? I know we have said since, for one, two years with Chris before about, hey, there's something going on, we've made contact, is this something that we should pursue?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, my, my first, some stuff that goes through my head, so. With the bill, they have a one-year workmanship warranty. We're obviously beyond that. What unfortunately, that doesn't get you beyond, so I'm thinking of like the exterior issues with sinkholes and some stuff that showed itself there. Much of that stuff isn't discoverable until, you know, beyond.
One year.
A year at least, until you start, you know, like, oh, until you can really recognize there is an issue. We were, we were well past the year of what they gave us. So yes, the only way you could potentially try to go back on that is, is through some, probably sort of litigation of some sort or a potentially threatening letter from an attorney that maybe they would respond to that. Yes, so the exterior storm sewer stuff, I, I think it would be worth to, to go down that avenue, yes. The interior plumbing, that one's probably a little tougher.
But could it be said that they should have known the slope needed to be and they did not do it correctly the first?
Is it negligence, is what I think you're asking? And how negligent is it? Is it gross negligence? Is it?
Yeah.
For a commercial building, they should have.
The, you're correct, so, you know, I told you the constraints that they did have to work within, but still the line that they put in would have been, I guess our case could potentially be the line they put in was not to code slope. So that would be our, I think that our potential stance there.
Okay, did the plumber take pictures or does he have that noted that so that we could utilize him?
Evidence, do you data?
Evidence.
I'm just gonna add, Tony Caldwell said that if any further discussion we should do in an executive meeting, which I was trying to find which days he was available, but if, if it's decided to move towards this way, everything else should be discussed in an executive meeting so that it's not.
Okay.
Open to, okay, so.
I didn't, yeah, okay, so then we will stop where we're at here and we'll wait to talk to the attorney and schedule an executive session.
Yeah, agreed with.
I didn't say too much. And health insurance for the director. About Jana, because Jana. Yes, I brought it up to her. When we offered Anne the position, we were not sure on, on health coverage at the time. I don't think that we got back to you before, or did you know? But while you, you accepted the offer, but you accepted the offer based on not knowing and I think maybe with the assumption that we, you were gonna be covered in some way or.
And it was, yeah, it was, I found out after I was approved on the last meeting. That it was the ninety day period.
Yeah, so she has ninety days before she's covered and so she's had to get, and I asked her about this, emergency health coverage. I, I don't know if, were you able to find that out? I asked Sarah what she thought as far as if we had decided to go with a thirty day exception for her to be covered, me, being August first, you, you thought it would be not much, like a.
If there's a determination tonight, then it's a matter of just calling the interns. And I go maybe for August one would be the start date.
Yeah, so I thought that would, I mean, ninety days is a long time to go without health insurance.
The piece that you're looking at is from the personnel manual. I have copies of that, I just don't know if, because if it, I don't know if it's something to be changed once or going forward with any new full-time staff.
I'm not prepared to make that decision.
Okay, okay. Right, you're not prepared to make that decision for the policy change?
Okay.
Or would you be willing to make a decision on insuring her at thirty days? Which would be August first, which would be this Friday?
I could step out of the room if it, if that would be. If you'd like, yeah.
Sure, go ahead, okay. I think what we're, I work, I know we get our insurance when we get our contract, correct?
For day one, most, most big cases, day one.
What was this policy? We don't know what.
Yeah, it was a.
Because insurance costs have gone up considerably, you know, probably since this policy. Well, looking at, are the vouchers over there? It has all the insurance for the four full-time employees and they're all between six hundred and some and eight hundred and some per month. So we're talking about between six hundred and eight hundred. And I mean, would it be?
Generally, I generally build it into the budget, just a thousand dollars. Better for low, I mean, purposes, because as you.
I wish it still.
Your premiums chucked significantly from the six hundred dollar, I can tell you I'm not in the six hundred dollar. Yeah, so there's an averaging that goes in there and generally a thousand.
I'm thinking about her getting a short-term policy for ninety days is extremely expensive. Yes, yeah, yeah, right. So that's my idea of insurance money up, it's her having to do any employee for ninety days is, to get a special Cobra policy is. Yeah, I don't think that she went with Cobra. I think she, she ended up going, getting like an emergency, like maybe marketplace. It's still very expensive and will get more, and will get more expensive months, yeah. So. Yeah, so I mean, I think that we should insure her as of today, but we could, you know, just say we're gonna do it for thirty days, which would be August first. Okay, with thirty days.
I think it's something that we definitely want to visit and we want to.
Yes, along with the, along with the vacation time.
Do we set a precedent if we do? I mean, do it the one time.
You know, that's what always, that's what holds me back from doing something like that is setting a precedent or, you know, if you step outside policy, then it.
But I think too, it can be that this is for the director. This doesn't have to be for every, you know, there can be a something in our policy that sets for the director. Really, I feel like they should be insured on day one, for good, you know, really good talent. I mean, I, I felt like when we offered her the position, we kind of were thinking that we were insuring on day one because we knew we had a really good insurance policy, health insurance policy.
It's a reasonable employee cost.
Yes, and, and, yeah, yes, like, yeah. And so I feel like she would have left that thinking she was, no, she was gonna be insured by us on July first.
But from an employee standpoint, switching jobs and having to wait ninety days is easy thing.
Right.
I'll say, as far as the precedent goes, so I'm in my work position, we have it set up where there is this tier of employees is for this duration of time and then for the.
And then for the other tier of employees, it's for a different duration of time. I found that's pretty standard. So I don't necessarily feel like if we did it that way, it would be a problem just because there's a lot of companies do offer that as well.
Yeah. Your experience, what kind of timeframe for insurance?
So for, for, for our, like, production employees, we do a 60-day wait period. Um, for our, like, office staff or management, that would be at the time hired.
Day one.
Yeah. The 90 days, I think is probably an old standard that a lot have gone away from. It's more 30 to 60 days. Um, but yeah, 60 days is our longest.
And that's with your two, too. Right, right. So, yeah. Okay. Okay. This is our discussion. Yeah. So you guys think about that. I think we do need to change, but we don't need to change that side, but we can make, uh, for, for the director. I think that would be a fair. Well, I, I move that we make an exception for Ian for 30-day employment to be covered by health insurance, August 1st. I'll second that. All right. And who seconded, Joyce? Okay. Joyce, you seconded? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we'll put this on. And then we. And new business.
Yeah, you can come back in.
I think we went to.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you. Probably okay to stay if you want to. On August 1st. So you need to make sure that happens. Thanks. Sarah's got you. Is there any other new business? If there's no other new business.
I'll make a motion then.